All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five South Burlington City Council meeting. We will begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Lori, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now have instructions on exiting the building in case of emergency and review of technology options with Jesse Baker, City Manager.
Thank you. So for those in the room, thank you for joining us. If there's an emergency in the room, you can go out the rear of the auditorium on the left or right side and then turn left or right to get outside. We are tonight using Zoom webinar for the first time. So this is our inaugural new change. Here we go. Much better. So please have patience with me if you are online. If you would like to speak during an item on the agenda, you can put your interested speaking in the Q and A box with your name and what you would, what item you would like to speak on, and then I will invite you to speak when the chair is ready. Other than that, we are not monitoring the chat or the Q and A for content.
Thank you, Jesse. Item three, Agenda Review. Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes in the order of the agenda items for tonight's meeting?
No, but just to maybe just clarify, item ten, that I think we were meant to or should also touch on the role and function of the committees themselves.
So where it says, Review Council Liaison Roles and Appointments to Committees and Possibly Take Action. So you want to modify that?
Role of Committees.
And role of committees?
Sure.
Any objections? All right, hearing none. We'll do that. We'll go to item four, which is Comments and Questions from the Public That Are Not Related to Tonight's Agenda. Are there any in the audience? Hi there. Oh, Wendell, you didn't read. Let's, Wendell, go first, okay?
Oh, no, no. No, no, no. I turned my shoulder and didn't see anybody move. There, I think my green light is working, correct?
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, if I should.
Remember to identify yourself now.
Oh, Wendell Coleman. As far as I know, what I want to talk about is not on the agenda, but if it is, cut me off. I paid my property taxes this morning. The absolute last day I could do so. I had no desire or intention to engage in that brinkmanship. I came here Friday in good conscience, planning to pay my taxes, and I found the place empty and locked up. I had no idea why until I finally walked along and I saw a sign in the window, "We are closed today to celebrate or observe," I think it was "Observe: Battle of Bennington Day." I certainly was not aware that this office was going to be closed Friday. I'm more aware than the average citizen, but if this was well-publicized, I missed it. And I think that anything out of the blue like that, that is going to happen, needs to be very, very well-publicized.
Can I ask a question? The city tax bills that went out have three coupon sections that are, that are tear-off that have the date to be paid. Was the date the eighteenth or the fifteenth? Does anybody know?
I don't know, but we are collecting taxes through today. And we, yep, we put that in the tax bills.
Okay. So, so because Friday was Bennington Battle Day, Monday was okay to pay.
I realize Monday was clearly on the bill that it was okay to pay.
Yeah.
But my neighbor was not as lucky as I was. She had to fly out of South Burlington Sunday. When I found out what was happening to her, I told her, "Fill out your stuff, put it in an envelope, and I'll take it to the clerk's office." I want to stress that the clerk who waited on me, I have nothing but good things to say about. She was over the top. She was very helpful about my neighbor's stuff, and in fact, there was error in it, and she's going to send her a letter to straighten that out. So I really appreciate her. But I deeply believe that the publicity should have been a lot greater. Yes, it was about a Bennington Day. Yes, Battle of Bennington Day is a recognized state holiday. However, it is in a special category, which says that how it's observed, whether it's a day off, whether it's a paid day, is totally up to the employer. So whatever happened that day was not a requirement of State of Vermont.
Okay.
And again, I just don't think the publicity was sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wendell. And would you like to go next? Is the green light on, on the base of the?
It is.
Okay. And please identify yourself.
I'm Jeannie Leduke. I live at ninety Cheese Factory Lane, South Burlington. I am requesting that you approve the City of South Burlington Purchase My TDRs and Mary Lou Leduke's TDRs. These were issued to us seventeen years ago at a value of seventeen thousand per TDR. I understand that the average value is twelve thousand today. I've included a map of the land we are requesting that you consider. These lots are three twenty-nine, ten, ninety, and eighty-five. Lot eighty-five is seven acres with one home. Lots three twenty-nine, ten, ninety equal thirteen acres with three homes. The land around the homes is being farmed by the Bread and Butter Farm. I have eight TDRs with a value of ninety-six thousand, and Mary Lou has six valued at seventy-two thousand. As this was part of the sale of the farm, I feel we have waited a long time for the rest of our money, seventeen years. I am eighty-four years old, and Mary Lou is seventy-five. We are both widows, and the money would allow us to live out the remainder of our lives without worrying. The Leduke Farm was in my husband's family for more than a hundred years. This property will always be a farm, which I am very proud of. I feel there should be some consideration for us, as I worked very hard to preserve this property. It took us four years and many negotiations to accomplish this. Cheese Factory Road will always be a beautiful, open area. It has benefited the city immensely. I feel we have been very patient and have not had any control of the sale of these TDRs. We would very much appreciate your consideration of the approval of this, of this purchase. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
I have the, actually, the map in here. Would you like that?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Anybody online? No hands up online?
Sorry.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll go on to item five, which is Counselors' Announcements and Reports on Committee Assignments and City Managers' Report. Anne, would you like to start tonight?
Yes. Yes, I'd be happy to start. But before I start, I'm wondering if everyone understands that when they make comments not related to the agenda, that we don't talk about them now?
That's generally the rule.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we knew that.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Wanted to make sure. I had the opportunity to attend. Our Congresswoman, Becca Ballant, came to the city this, earlier this week. Her focus was housing. She came in particular to see what South Burlington had done in terms of Market Street and the city center. And I was there, you joined later on, and I was there clearly with the city manager and Paul from Planning and and Alana, as well as there was representatives from the hospital. There was the hospital CEO, as well as the president of UVM. Our Congresswoman was very complimentary of what was, what we had, what the city had done in terms of the variety of housing, was very complimentary about the, because who else was there? Were people who I didn't know, but were the builders and the developers. And really, every, it was a kumbaya. Everyone was really talking about how well this took a long time, but how well people were looking, how well people were, ended up working together and were very, I want to repeat this, were very, very complimentary of the staff of South Burlington. So I was proud to be there. I just was there. I didn't really say anything except to point out the staff.
Thank you, Anne. Lori?
I was away for the past two weeks, so I do not have anything to report other than that it was really nice to be away. And hopefully, the smoke and the heat is receding and we'll have a pleasant fall.
I think it is because from the aperture between two roofs, I could see Mount Abe today for the first time in a long time, right? But like last week and the week before, it was just, this, it was like a gauze right across the horizon, yeah.
It's becoming the new normal in the summer.
Yeah, well, those Canadians, why can't they put out their own fires, you know?
Well, you know, some congressmen sent a note to Canada about that.
I hope so. Yeah, you know. Andrew?
Sure. It's actually been a busy couple of weeks. So attended the Sexes Meeting. We talked about beautification plans for Eldridge Cemetery, also some discussion about how to account for cemetery operations, like vis a vis the other parts of the city, and who charges whom what. And I think we'll have to flesh it out a little bit more as we kind of refine the governance model and the accounting. Attended the Economic Development Committee meeting. We went into some detail around the implementation plan. We're going to see the strategic plan tonight, but we went into kind of below that, a couple of levels below that, implementation details. And members of the committee went around and kind of highlighted the items they thought we should prioritize, and were complimentary of the plan and the, and the work that was done. And, and I agree with them. I think it's a very good plan. Attended the Bike Ped Committee meeting. The most meeting was spent reviewing recommendations from a consultant, has with respect to bike ped improvements to Patch Road. It was a short-term and a medium-term plan to make walking and biking safer along Patch Road. The short-term would be that in connection with planned paving, there's a couple of years to build, kind of build out the, you know, the shoulder to make it a safer bikeway with a buffer between the shoulder and, and the rest of the road. And the long-term is to, as, as recommended, to put a shared use path in place of the sidewalk. Attended the Board of Abatement hearings along with Anne and Tim, Elizabeth. Hard. Some, you know, hard. The, the people have, you know, experiences that really tug at your heart. And I hope, I hope we were able to, you know, help some of them. So, but it was, it was hard. Those, those hearings were hard. And then attended the conversation with the counselor at the Senior Barbecue at Fairbanks Park, had some nice conversations with folks, and it was, it was a wonderful event. The city really, really does a nice, nice job of those events. And the seniors, they were very complimentary and really happy to be there and just happy to have the friendship and the collegiality and to be able to meet new folks and, you know, at, you know, at that stage in life was something that they all really treasured. And, you know, yeah, people were just really happy to be there. So.
Thank you, Andrew. Elizabeth?
Well, I think I followed Andrew around last two weeks. I also attended the Economic Development Committee, looking forward to the presentation tonight. The Board of Abatement, the Housing Committee met this week, and I think you'll see a resolution in front of the, on approval on tonight's agenda. The Senior Barbecue, sponsored by the Rec Department, was excellent. I did want to recognize a couple of the Rec staff, Rebecca Isom, Kate Lickety, Richard Young, and there were several South Burlington High School volunteers also serving. I had a chance to meet several residents of Allard Square and was really excited to hear about their participation level in the Rec Department's Summer Strides Program. And that's kind of a competitive event where they're given, folks are given the opportunity to kind of check off any number of different activities around the city, in our parks, in our library, in our city center. And the group that I spoke to was probably about six different individuals who were very active in all the programs. And it looks like that's something that would get a high level of participation. And lastly, the school board, I think you heard this, but the school board has designated an advisory committee that will be part of recommending the top two or three candidates for interim superintendent to the school board. And our own city manager, Jesse Baker, will serve on that. Also, Tom Chittenden will serve on that, and a community resident, Vicky Abrahamson, will serve on that as well. And that's what I have. Thank you.
So they have, they already have an interim?
They have an emergency succession plan placed.
So, so currently, there's an interim superintendent, right?
I don't, yes.
Do they have that title, or?
I, I don't actually know what the official title, but the, the individual was appointed under the policy around emergency succession.
And then there'll be an interim, and then there'll be a permanent. After a national search? Is that the plan?
That is the plan, but I think the next step is to get to the short-term interim.
Great. Thank you. I attended a planning commission meeting. They had a bare quorum. They had no chair or vice chair. And they discussed, well, Paul Connor brought up the fact that, you know, we met the week before that and basically passed the LDRs on to a, you know, public hearing, but made a small change, that little peninsula up, you know, above the Doubletree, and that was explained to them. So they're going to take a look at that and see what they can do. I did go to the BCA, the Board of Abatement meeting, and, and heard the, the four sets of people make an appeal. I also went to Nextdoor's Allard Square Art Show that they had, art that was created by people with dementia, various forms, Lewy body or Alzheimer's and whatnot. And it was a very small exhibit, but it was very powerful to see how people could still be able to produce art, and it gave them a form of expression. And then I talked for a long time to Megan Polite or Polite, I'm not sure how to pronounce it. She's the head of the Vermont Alzheimer's Association. So that was a really productive time there, and I got to see the artwork as well. And I think they're going to have another public showing of it coming up this week. I wish I had the dates ready. I don't. But it's, it's online somewhere. I also went to the Becca Ballant City Center visit, but I was late. But thank goodness Anne was our city council representative, and she was there on time, and she made a very good impression, I'm sure. But at least I was there to make one statement. And I think that I, there was a PAC, Prevention Advisory Committee meeting today, which I had to miss because I had to transport my son to the airport to go to Chicago, to go to Taiwan. But now they're stuck on the, they took him, they couldn't get to Chicago because there were tornadoes at the airport there. So now they're back at the gate, and they're waiting to see what happens. We don't know what's going to happen. So the last thing I wanted to say was that if, well, two things. You noticed that the paving seems to be complete on Dorset Street, both courses? Did you, are you going to talk about that? Okay, I didn't want to steal your thunder.
So they were paving, I thought, today and tomorrow, but maybe they doubled their work.
I don't know, but it's smooth as silk right now. I don't know if that's both layers. The other thing is if you were on Dorset Street today, you noticed that the water tank is up to about three tiers of steel, and the lid for it is about three quarters or two-thirds complete. They, they don't have room to put the fourth thing on, while they're still working, and they're going to lift that up and then just put it on top. They had to excavate into Dorset Street today, so there was, was one-way traffic, but it was pretty manageable. The delays were very short. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thanks. So if they, they may have done both quotes today, if they were making good time, and then the striping will follow that later on this week, to be done by the time school starts. So that was one of my updates. Also wanted to just publicly thank the school board for including me on the search committee. I think the partnership between the city and the school is really critical to our community well-being moving forward. There'll be more information about this forthcoming, but did want to share publicly that starting April, April, August twenty-fifth, the GMT bus service will begin to Market Street. This is something that folks have been asking for, for a very long time, and will be fifteen-minute service between Market Street, Dorset Street, the mall, and the Hill Institutions and downtown Burlington. In addition to Dorset Street being paved this week, we also have the new stop sign that has been installed on Market and Garden Street in advance of Garden Street opening later in the summer. We are doing some kind enforcement just to remind our neighbors that that stop sign is there. So be on the lookout for that sign. And then the work will begin on the twenty-fifth for the water line and shared use path along at the entrance to Healthy Living and Trader Joe's. That's the last piece we need to be able to open Garden Street. So we'll continue to be a construction site for a while, but it is coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Let's move on to item six, which is the Consent Agenda. We have several items. Six A is Consider and Sign the Disbursements, the AP warrants. Six B is Approve the Minutes From June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and July seventh, twenty twenty-five. Six C, Award the FY twenty-six Line Striping Contract to LND Safety Marking Corporation. Authorize the Deputy Director of Operations to sign that contract. Six D, Authorize the City Manager to Execute the Proposed Development Agreement Between the City of South Burlington and O'Brien pertaining to the relinquishment and relocation of Old Farm Road upon final review and approval of the city attorney. Six E, Appoint John Christman as Building Inspector for the City of South Burlington pursuant to twenty-four at VSA Chapter thirteen and three oh one, or Paragraph three oh one. Six F, Authorize Fire Marshal John Christman, Assistant Fire Marshal Casey Follinsby, and Rental Registry Manager Patricia Wayman to be the designated officials to issue municipal tickets for violations of the Fire Prevention and Protection, Electrical Installations, or Residential Rental Registry Ordinance. Six G, Approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, Amending the City's Housing Trust Fund. Can I have a motion to approve these, Miss Consent Agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Anne?
Just in terms of the minutes, I would like to abstain from the minutes of six twenty-seven and six thirty, given the fact that I was not yet appointed.
Did you want to vote on the minutes for July seventh, or abstain from all three?
Well, no, I was here on July seventh.
Do we want to separate out the two minutes from the other and make that a separate item?
Yes, please. I'm sorry.
Okay, so let's create six H, all right, which is just the, the minutes for July seventh, okay?
Okay.
So I'll write that down. So six H is minutes for seven, seven, twenty-five, and then we'll remove them from?
I think you want to do it the other way. I think you want to remove the June twenty-sixth and thirtieth to a new H?
Okay.
And leave the seventh on the consent agenda, and then approve the consent agenda altogether?
That sounds even better. Okay, so we'll strike July seventh. But can we approve that separately?
We'll, we'll strike six twenty-seven and six thirty. We'll approve the consent agenda.
Yeah.
I amend my motion to strike from six B, the minutes for six twenty-seven and six thirty.
Second. So we have a new motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
And I move to approve the minutes from July seventh.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you abstain from the, from the?
July seventh? No, the ones I'm abstaining from, yeah.
But the other one, the previous?
So.
Did I do it backwards?
You did it backwards.
I'm sorry. I did do it backwards. I, strike that motion. I'm sorry. I move to approve the minutes from June twenty-seventh and June thirtieth.
There you go. Yes. Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Good job, team.
All right. So now we're moving on to item seven, which is Possible Approval of National Opioid Settlement Agreements with Purdue Pharma, the Sackler Family, and Eight Opioids Manufacturers Negotiated by the State of Vermont and authorize the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary for the city to join in the settlement agreements with Jill Abrams, Office of the Vermont Attorney General, Colin McNeil, City Attorney.
Come on down, Colin. Come on down, Jill.
This is not your first time here.
It's my second time.
Second time. Good evening.
Good evening. We're here to present just some brief information on some settlements that the State of Vermont has entered into with the pharmaceutical companies, the Sackler Family, Purdue Pharma, and eight other manufacturers. And Jill Abrams from the Vermont Attorney General's office is here to give a brief, really brief presentation and just answer any questions you may have about these. These are similar to settlements we entered into back in twenty twenty-one. Similar, different parties, but similar terms.
The, the last time you were here, was it different terms, different parties?
Yeah.
Okay.
There were, there were opioid settlements, but with different defendants.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to do really high level, and then if you have questions, I'm happy to answer any of them. So we're talking about two different settlements. The first is with Purdue and the Sacklers. It may be, and I just, I can't remember, it may be that when I was here before, round one of Purdue and the Sacklers was part of, part of the discussion. There was a settlement. It was appealed. It went to the Supreme Court of the United States, and now it's back again. I'm happy to report that this time around, the settlement is for more money. So that, that worked out really well. Vermont had objected to the original settlement. So the settlement now is in two parts, six and a half billion dollars being contributed by the Sackler family, the folks who own Purdue, and then roughly nine hundred million dollars will come via the Purdue bankruptcy into what they call the bankruptcy estate for a total of seven point four billion. That money gets divided among all of the states in the country and their various subdivisions, cities, towns, and counties, and then other groups of creditors, personal injury folks, hospitals, you know, a large group. Vermont's portion will be twenty-two million dollars. I'm happy to report that while the other states are receiving their money over fifteen years, we negotiated to get all of ours at once. So once the bankruptcy court and our state superior court approve, assuming that, assuming one thing, which I'll tell you in a second, we'll, we'll get our twenty-two million dollars, and it will be paid to our various subdivisions, town cities, all of the counties except for Essex and Grand Isle. The catch, and it's the same catch across the country, is that certain subdivisions have to sign on. And so in Vermont, it's any subdivision with a population over ten thousand, which is why South Burlington is very important, and all of our counties except for Essex and Grand Isle. The state has already given its approval, and so this has been done in two stages. All of the states across the country gave their approval, and now it's out to the various subdivisions across the country. So I can say more if you want, but big picture, that's what it is. And South Burlington will get a portion represented by its percentage population across the state versus other towns.
Do you know what that amount will be?
I don't. I think the best way to figure it out, if you, if you want to, I'll give Colin the link. And this might be good for future reference for South Burlington as well, because the other settlements, not the ones I'm about to do. about to talk about, the second group of settlements, but the prior settlements, almost all of them were over a term of years and the years varied. A couple of them, we were paid upfront, but several of the set of settlements, um, payments come between five and nine years. And so there's a website that's been put up by uh, a claims administrator who's in charge of, in distributing the money across the country, where you can look at your, your state and then your town and see exactly what you're going to get for every year. I don't think that's up yet for the Purdue settlement, but if you look, for example, at the distributor settlement and you just see what South Burlington's percentage is, um, you can take that and apply it. Um, or you could figure out, there must be statistics about um, South Burlington's percentage of population. Um, so the way the money is distributed in Vermont and in many other states is fifteen percent of the money goes to the general fund. Seventy percent of it goes to what's called the state abatement, opioids abatement fund, and that's um, a statutory creation by our legislature uh, with an advisory board, with people who are expert in um, in the opioid crisis, people with lived experiences, doctors, nurses, the like, who make a decision about how the money will best be used across the state. And then fifteen percent of the money is divided among our um, our towns and our counties.
What are the odds that we actually will get any money? Is, I mean, is it a certainty?
Unless something, I, I, I mean unless somebody successfully appeals.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I, I think that the, the possibility of that happening is really slim, you know, fingers crossed, but um, the structure of this settlement, which is what, what the Attorney General's Office objected to before, has been completely changed. And so the old structure doesn't apply anymore. This new structure is very, very different and we don't have any reason to believe that it's gonna be anything but successful. Can I guarantee it a hundred percent? Absolutely not. But, but that's our, that's what we think and I think pretty much everybody across the country thinks the same way.
And you said Vermont will get a lump sum?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does the money physically exist today within the bankruptcy structure?
The, the money, so the money that we're going to get?
Yeah.
Um, yes. The money that some other states who are getting it over fifteen years, it's going to be paid in over fifteen years. And one of the reasons we, we really wanted our money upfront was because we didn't want to be subject to whatever one of the Sacklers might decide to do or not do in fourteen years.
Great. Any questions from councilors at all?
And ju- just so you're aware, we, what we put in the memo is we have received money to date on the prior settlements. Um, and I think we recently just received um, a deposit from, from those and those are still, still coming. So we have a fund dedicated to this with money in it from the prior settlements. Uh, the money will be used and deposited in the same fund to be used for opioid abatement reasons.
So quick math, we'll probably get around a hundred thousand or so.
Could you repeat that? I didn't hear what you said.
So I just did some quick math. We'll probably get, be getting around a hundred, a hundred thousand or so. So, yeah. And, and what's in the, we have two something now in the
Yeah, right, right now, we've, we've deposited ten thousand dollars to the Turning Point a couple of years ago and we have two hundred and fifteen thousand, one forty nine in the, in the fund right now.
Three hundred plus thousand or so in there.
So the only question I have, which isn't pertinent to this directly, but the fund that we have, how that's being allocated, how it's being planned for its use, and if that's something we, we'll be talking about in an upcoming uh, meeting.
So the, the council's talked about it um, a few times, the money we've had, um, and made that one vote to allocate the ten thousand dollars to Turning Point upon discussion with them. The intention of the fund is to be used for specifically addressing the impacts of the opioid crisis, so um, providing services. It's not to supplant something that already exists, um, or necessarily build up a new program. Any funds allocated out of that fund would have to come through the council. We, you would need to approve the allocation of that fund. Um, and I would recommend that we um, not make those decisions until our new police chief is on board and oriented and can assess the needs in our community and make a recommendation.
That makes tremendous sense to me and given what's going on with uh, homelessness and substance abuse issues in our communities right now, I think it's very appropriate for us to plan a time to have a serious conversation about how we can best leverage these funds to support our community.
True, Lori. Um, any other comments? Anybody online have a comment?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Did you have an extra comment to make?
The only thing I was going to say is there's
Is yours?
Uh, sorry, there's a second settlement. So there's a settlement and it looks, just reading over Colin's shoulder, I think it's, it's in the memo that he's prepared. There's a second settlement that's comprised of eight smaller settlements and it's being described as one settlement because we didn't want people to have to, you know, sign eight times. That one is smaller. It's seven hundred and twenty million dollars total. Three of the sub-settlements are over time. I did some back of the envelope math today, um, and you know, I, I, I used pen and paper, so I may be off a little bit, but it's roughly um, one point seven four million dollars to the state. So it's considerably smaller than what we're talking about. It gets divided exactly the same way.
Okay. So we'd need a motion for this?
So I move to approve the two settlement agreements with Purdue Pharma, the Sackler family, and eight opioid manufacturers and authorize the City Manager to execute any and all documents necessary for the city to join the settlement agreements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I'll just say that it, it's really sad. I mean, we, I'm sure all governments, right, are, are thankful to get this money, but it's after the fact. The damage was done a while ago. The Sackler family and Purdue Pharma have damaged a large segment of the American population and others as well. And it would be better if that hadn't, damage hadn't happened at all and we wouldn't be sitting here trying to clean up. We will never be able to clean up from this. So it's just really sad. So, but I'm glad that we're able to obtain some funds to help local organizations, help treat people that suffer from opioid addiction, so.
Yeah, we are too. In a horrible situation.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous. Thanks for coming.
Sure.
Thank you, Jill. Thanks to the Attorney General's Office for your work on the settlement as well.
Our pleasure.
So we'll move on to item eight, which is receive a presentation on the South Burlington Economic Development Strategic Plan and possibly adopt the plan with Alana Blanchard, our Community Development Director, and Nicole LeBrec from, who is the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for coming. Make sure your green lights are on.
So I'm gonna do um, a quick table setting here and I think Laura and Stephen, this is our first night using this webinar feature, so tell me if you aren't able to do the things you need to do. Um, so with us tonight are uh, our Civic Soul Consultants as well as Nicole LeBrec, the Chair of our Economic Development Committee, and Alana Blanchard, who is uh, as you all know, the Community Development Director and has been project managing this effort. They are here to walk you through um, their uh, findings and recommendations and our, and our, hopefully our first adopted economic development strategic plan for the city that's based on many, many hours of uh, feedback and uh, work of our community. So with that, I'll turn over to Nicole.
Great. Thanks so much. Um, I'm really honored to be the new Chair of the Economic Development Commune, uh, Council Committee. The South Burlington Strategic Plan, Economic Strategic Plan that you're gonna hear about this evening, really creates the vision um, for the committee. And it crafts sort of our, our playbook, our work plan for the next five years. I think you're gonna be really impressed with it and um, it's been a lot of uh, great community involvement getting here. Um, tonight, we are gonna formally ask for the City Council's adoption of the full economic strategic plan. Um, and we're getting the full resounding support of the committee.
Great. Alana, do you want to add, add anything or are you good?
I'm good. I think uh, Stephen and um, Laura will speak on behalf of the plan very well.
Great. Um, so Laura and Stephen, I see you both on Travis. Is there any way to show them on the screen with the video with the, eh, there you go. Perfect, thank you.
Can you see us?
We can.
And hear us?
Yes.
Very good. Jesse, are you ready for us?
Go for it.
Okay. Uh, well, it is, uh, it is wonderful to be with you all this evening. I had fun listening to the beginning of your meeting. It's always fun to plug into City Council meetings and hear what's on deck for you all. Stephen and I are really delighted to be here this evening and present to you the strategic plan that we, along with so many members of the community, have been working on for the past many months. And um, before we get started, I just wanna say a special thank you to Jess, the team. There was a project management team that met frequently, discussed details, dug into appendices that are so long that we're impressed with everyone's tenacity. There's a lot of uh, data and analytics that goes into these kinds of reports. So to the team that included Jesse and Nicole and Alana and Paul, thank you. Uh, also a special thanks to the Economic Development Committee who was with us all the way and we appreciate their um, their endorsement of this plan and to those of you on the City Council that participated along the way. It really has been a community effort and we feel very strongly that economic development is something that happens with communities, not two or four communities. And the engagement of South Burlington in this plan has just been amazing. So we'll dive right in. Um, this is the table of com, contents. We're gonna talk about why we did it, how we did it, the vision statement. We're gonna walk you through the five strategic goals at a pretty high level. Just know there's lots and lots of detail, including uh, steps and timelines and partners that are identified for each of these goals. And then we'll talk about how we move forward from here. So I said it already, economic development, when it, when it happens and happens well in a community, uh, it is with the community. And by that, what Stephen and I mean is we want people in South Burlington to see themselves in economic development. Uh, economic development, when it's practiced in its most modern version, touches people's lives in a lot of different ways. It's not a narrow definition. It's a very broad and deep definition. And the economic development strategies that get the most traction are those that community members participate in and, and see themselves in. Whether you're a small business, whether or not you're a business that's taken off in ways that are hard to describe unless it's on sixty Minutes, whether you operate a, a small local business or work at the university, we want everyone to see their part of this plan. So this goes into that economic development model. On the left, which you'll see is a very traditional model of economic development. It's all about company attraction. Uh, who can we get to move here and either start their business here or grow a business here? It is easy to measure. It's how many jobs you create and what kind of investment happens in a community. And there is nothing wrong with this. There is a place for, for new business attraction in all economic development plans. What we're representing on the right-hand side, though, is what we call complete community economic development. We feel very strongly that workforce is the most essential building block for any successful economic development plan. You all know this. You cannot pick up a newspaper and not read about the workforce challenges that people all over the country have, whether it's recruiting or retaining talent. Uh, those communities that get their arms around how to keep talent in place are gonna be able to play any economic development game they want to play. So we feel very strongly that workforce development is central to economic development. We feel equally strongly that innovation has a role in economic development. These are those little engines in your economy that will keep your sectors, your target sectors, moving along and modernizing. These are those things that attract the entrepreneurs to your community to come and stay. And it brings energy to a community. And all communities have the ability to do innovation and we saw lots of opportunities in South Burlington to be a community that is known for innovation. Of course, once you get oriented around people, which is a workforce and talent strategy, other issues come up all of the time. And we put housing on this chart because it, it, it comes up the most frequently when communities are working this deeply on economic development. Destination development, and there are two different ways of thinking about this. One is who comes to South Burlington and what do they do when they're there? Uh, we already know they stay in your hotels. What else can we offer that causes people to want to stay and explore this wonderful community? The other way of thinking about destination development is how do we attract and keep our people? Whether that's kids that grew up in South Burlington choosing to stay in South Burlington, people are retiring, having the ability to stay and enjoy this community, but there's an internal and an external aspect of this destination development. Once you've got all that in place, then when you come to attraction, you are laser focused on the kinds of businesses that you know for sure are gonna support the economy that represents your vision of the future of South Burlington. So this is what we call complete community. So how we did it, um, there are a, there are a lot of elements to putting together, together what I would call a full-throated economic development plan and that is what you have before you. They are data-driven, but they're also community-centered. Uh, so we did benchmarking against ten peer communities. This is, was nationwide as well as regional. Uh, we also analyzed target industry clusters. Think of those as the economic sectors around which you are currently have strong suits. And then looking to the future, what are those sectors that you could strategically grow? We do a lot of stakeholder engagement. You all participated in that. This is threaded throughout the engagement. We talked to over a hundred stakeholders, in some cases, two or three times, to better understand circumstate, circumstances, points of view, and, and ideas that people have around what it's time for now in South Burlington. Strategy development is when it all comes together. We're looking at those intersections between what the data tells us, what the goals could be based on benchmarking, and what the community has energy for and can get behind. And this is, uh, this is the stage that we are at now where we pull it all together into implementation planning. And that is, uh, you know, if Stephen and I come from very practical backgrounds and we know that steps one, two, and three will deliver an extraordinarily interesting set of insights, but without really good implementation planning, um, sometimes those things sit on a shelf. So we take a lot of time with our implementation plan. We did this with Jesse and Nicole and Alana and Paul to make sure that every step of the way, we were thinking about how high a priority and activity could be, whether or not it would require future investment in capacity or any other kind of funding. But this is a big plan. Just know that it is also a plan that plays out over the course of five years. And each year, you'll get a chance to reflect on progress and make sure that, one, you're in alignment with your own plan and, two, that if something has happened that causes circumstances to change, that you can make adjustments along the way. So what we accomplished, we assessed your assets and challenges. We benchmarked uh, South Burlington against ten peer cities, the state of Vermont, and the United States to understand your competitive position. We've shared this along the way, along the way in stakeholder meetings and I will tell you, this is one of the things that really does tend to pique people's interest. It's, it is both interesting and enlightening uh, to look at yourself through a lens of comparison. Uh, we spent a lot of time with city leadership, members of the South Burlington Economic Development Committee to align on priorities. Um, I can tell you, uh, not as an aside, but as something that I think everybody should be very proud of is, this is a community that believes in its city leadership. The, the stakeholders that we met with have a lot of trust uh, in city leadership, including all of you on the dais, that this is a priority for you and your investment in the plan is a sure sign of that. And that the way that you all are aligned on economic development is a sign that things will move forward. Uh, we conducted a comprehensive target cluster assessment. Again, that's to identify industries where South Burlington can compete and win. We analyzed at a much deeper level, six peer organizations to evaluate their organizational structure. So here we're looking for how they develop programming, staffing, and governance to harvest best practices. As you think about economic development in your future, of course, business as usual would have you putting no resources into this. This is, you know, these plans do require resourcing and we looked for some best practices and guidance and what worked and what to avoid in this part of the work. We held more than twenty one-on-one interviews with local business owners, educators, civic leaders, and we captured, and I mean, a truly diverse set of perspectives from people within your community. And we engaged more than a hundred residents, including business leaders and civic partners through round tables, interviews, and working sessions to shape what's before you this evening so that we can say authentically, this is a strategy that is informed and working sessions to shape what's before you this evening so that we can say authentically, this is a strategy that is informed by community engagement. Okay, Stephen, you want to do this next one?
Sure. Um, so, so as we think about building out on the plan, one of the things I think that is really great to, to think through is that we're actually starting from a place of strength. Um, so as, as Laura mentioned, um, in addition to sort of the strategic document that we, that's in front of you and that you've had a chance to hopefully look at and we're presenting tonight, there's a lot of data that has been collected, uh, to support this, um, initiative. And so one of the, we're going to hit a few of the key findings out of that. Um, first and foremost, I think one of the things that jumps out to us about South Burlington is that clearly we're a community on the rise. Um, it's a fast-growing community. Um, it's a community that is growing quite fast. And I think one of the things that was quite interesting for everyone is that in fact, when you look at South Burlington and the types of individuals that it's attracting, it's actually attracting a lot of young professionals and young families. So it's becoming actually a much younger community, uh, than Vermont. So Vermont is skewing a little bit older. South Burlington is actually doing the opposite and, and skewing a little bit, uh, and becoming a bit younger, which was an interesting finding. Um, it's a highly educated, uh, community. Uh, seven in 10 residents have a college degree. Um, that's about two times the US average just for a, a benchmark. Uh, so it's extremely educated community. Um, as Laura mentioned before, when we did the cluster analytics, one of the things that jumps out when you look at the county in Northwest Vermont is that about 20% of all the jobs and particularly a lot of the innovation sectors is actually headquartered in, uh, in, in South Burlington. And so you see uh, an innovation economy that's driven with, uh, electric aviation and the connection to Beta, for instance. Uh, and other aerospace, uh, uh, companies and organizations as well. You know, life sciences, you see the chip, uh, the chip manufacturing and chip, uh, chip development as well as a whole host of professional services and sort of technology support, environmental services and others. So it's highly innovative, uh, economy. And you kind of see that, you'll see that reflected throughout the plan. You know, I think the other piece of, uh, of this, uh, the sort of element that jumps out to us and is just the investment that the South Burlington has made in its, in its city center in terms of trying to create that as a hub or kind of the new civic life in the community. And one of the things that I think you'll see throughout the plan and we'll talk a little bit about is how we see that activating over the next, uh, next several years as we're working to, to fulfill the economic development plan. There's a lot of ideas that yes, we've built cit- city center. There's a lot of housing that's coming to city center. The nail question that's set forth is really, how do you program it from a placemaking standpoint? And how do you make it become a place of and center around entrepreneurship that you can actually start to build a community hub around? Um, climate, uh, leadership is strategy. So throughout the plan, um, obviously self, one of the values that we heard over and over in our engagement uh, with South Burlington stakeholders, the importance of climate, importance of climate change. And so you'll see that that's represented in our plan and connection to that. Um, and then finally, um, South Burlington is a really lovely place to live. Um, and it's got a, an amazing quality of place to it, uh, both from the kind of natural beauty that surrounds you, but also a lot of um, the amenities that you all are building in city center, but your great schools and a lot of the, uh, lifestyle amenities that are in the community as well. Um, just a couple, uh, few data points to share with you again, to build off of, of our orientation about who we are as a community. Um, about 22,000 residents. I've already mentioned the population growth, um, and the educational attainment levels. Uh, but one of the things I'd like to, you know, take, take a real quick look at is that, uh, that prime talent pool, those, uh, those residents that are 25 to 44 years of age, we, a lot of times as economic developers focus on those, those individuals because they become the workforce of, of the future. And what's interesting is actually when you look at that sector, um, the share of those, uh, of those residents in South Burlington is about 5% larger than the US average and about 13% larger than, uh, more than Vermont. So it's, we're, we're very much in a sense uh, batting above our, 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 our target there as it relates to, uh, that, that prime talent pool. Strong median household incomes. We do know that housing affordability is something that comes up, came up over and over. But again, the connection back to those industries that we're kind of recommending as part of the plan helped us to think about how to, uh, to, uh, challenge those and to keep the median household income, uh, high. High labor participation rate. And again, uh, a pretty, uh, short median commute of about 18 minutes. So again, speaking to those good quality of place assets that are represented. So with that, I'll turn it back to Laura. She'll kick us off on our vision statement and, uh, and orient us on the plan and then we'll go back and forth on the strategy document.
Okay, um, when we were thinking about all of these assets and listening so deeply to the community, the thing that, uh, the thing that just struck us and we captured it in the following statement is South Burlington, bold by nature, powered by innovation. And those themes came up over and over again. A landscape for us, creatives, founders, builders and doers. Where next generation industries scale, talent thrives, city center comes to life and climate and community values lead the way, powering Vermont's next economy. So, uh, the way that we're gonna, the, the way that the next chunk of this presentation will go is what you're looking at here is a summary of each of the goals and what it accomplishes. And then we'll go through each one briefly. So the way to think about this, just top line is innovation, talent, place, readiness, capacity. The first goal is bold innovation that powers the future. And the idea here is that we are going to become a hub for leading edge, clean and high value innovation. And, and what we want you to see is that one of the things that became so clear to us is that this idea of climate and climate change and conservation, those values, it's not a standalone si- sidecar. It's not, it's not its own, it's not its own set of goals for you. It is so central to the way that you do business and the way that you see yourself, that it is threaded through the strategic plan. So when we talk about leading edge, clean and high value innovation, you can see that thread coming through on innovation. Goal number two, a place where talent belongs. And here we want to make sure that this is, that we are a place where diverse talent and entrepreneurs stay and succeed. And there are lots of strategies that it takes in order for this to really come to life. This is everything from housing to connectivity to the right kind of jobs and career pathways to make sure that people can come and stay. Goal number three, a destination that draws you in. And this is about making sure that South Burlington, that we're a vibrant destination that appeals to residents and visitors alike. So you've got a lot of the infrastructure. City center is a terrific example. What you're going to see here is about activation, those things that we can do that, that draw people in. Goal four, ready for what's next. And this is all about quality growth and investment. And that has to do with city processes, ready sites and the tools to support them. This is about the organization playing a role uh, where those intersections make the most sense in supporting the economic, uh, future that you see for yourselves and built to deliver. And this is about building an economic development team to deliver on the potential. And we recognize that these, these resources will come over time. We will talk about some initial resources that we think will really catalyze this plan right off the bat. So how do we know if we're winning? Um, y- you know Jessie well, and so you know that this is a question she would, would have asked even no matter what. It is important to know that your strategy is working and no better way than to figure out what the measures are on the front end. So when we're talking about talent staying and growing, we will be looking at South Burlington residents, especially young professionals and working families to see if they're staying, thriving and finding career pathways in the city's evolving economy. And these are things that we can measure. When we think about businesses that are scaling in South Burlington, we'll be looking at expansions. We'll be looking at relocations. We'll be looking at new ventures and growing in your target sector. So now this comes back to a comment I made at the beginning. You're, you're not up for any old growth. You're, what you're going to be supporting and what you're going to be advocating for and working for is growth in very targeted sectors. And we're going to be looking to see whether or not those sectors are growing and thriving. Uh, four, residents feeling connected to place. Uh, resident, we want people to feel as though South Burlington is a community where quality of life, civic life and identity are aligned. And we want this to be backed up with public spaces of which you have many local businesses and inclusive opportunities to participate. And that investment reflects your values. So again, it is that high quality development. It's that it's climate aligned. It's that it's fiscally balanced with a strong mix of commercial, residential and clean industry that will move you into this future economy that we're looking for. Stephen, you want me to do the first one and then we'll? Okay, um, so goal one, bold innovation that powers the future. And this is about growing South Burlington into a hub for leading edge, clean, high value innovation. So, um, I think most people know, but it's worth noting that you are home to some of the state's most promising innovation assets, whether that's electric aviation to next generation chips. And so you are already sitting at the center of a clean, very climate-aligned economy. And you've got companies already here. You know these companies. It's Beta. It's OnLogic. Um, your university supports these organizations well. You've got the tech hub. Uh, you've got all of the elements that are going to drive progress in this way. Uh, but there, there is work to do and it is going to require coordination and investment and a strategy that are going to help these folks scale. So here be thinking about housing. Stephen mentioned this earlier. Housing is an issue for some of these very employers to make sure that as they're recruiting, when they're thinking through their talent strategies, they've got to make sure that talent that they're either recruiting or keeping have affordable housing that matches the incomes that they have. So these are the, we have also looked at supply chains. And there, there can be, uh, there can be a business recruitment strategy that helps these companies develop localized supply chains. And we've done some initial work to know that there is a really strong interest and some specific ideas around how we can grow local supply chains. So the strategies underneath goal one are 1.1, launch sector partnerships in aviation, life science and ship manufacturing to drive workforce development and that supply chain growth I was just talking about. So what you're seeing in this first strategy is we're getting laser focused on the target industries. In the second strategy, that's anchoring Vermont's tech hub. That is about collaborating with the University of Vermont and global foundries to, to raise up the leadership that you are playing in this, in these federal innovation efforts. Uh, and there's, and there's still room for optimism that these things are going to happen. The third area is creating an innovation district near the airport. I think all of you all talked about this. We heard this over and over and over again about the airport. And the idea here is let's support the electric aviation and clean tech manufacturing that's happening out there and create a district where you can do some very targeted business recruitment and business expansion of your existing businesses. The fourth one here is the idea of supporting those early-stage companies. This is the innovation and entrepreneurship that we, we've been talking about. Uh, we see a real opportunity at city center for an innovation hub. Um, some sort of public-private accelerator or incubator that just becomes a hub for those businesses, connecting them to resources, whether that's, uh, workspace or teaching people how to develop strategic business plans or connecting them to, uh, workforce training or any of those things that small startup businesses are going to need access to. Think of it as a navigation center. This could be a really great way to animate city center. And the last one here is, let's tell that story. Uh, one of the things that Stephen likes to say is storytelling is, is central to all economic development. And it's a little bit about figuring out what you want to put in your storefront. And we think that this first goal, uh, and because it so clearly represents the values of this community, we want to tell that innovation story.
Okay, I'm going to do goal two. Um, so goal two is really centered on talent, as Laura had mentioned before. Um, so we will make South Burlington the place where diverse talent and entrepreneurs stay and succeed. As I mentioned earlier, highly educated community, seven in 10 residents have a college degree. Uh, we have strong labor participation rate as well, about seven in 10 are participating in the, uh, in the labor force. So we're having a lot of folks that are staying and engaged in the workforce. Um, lots of entrepreneurship happening in the community. The real connection for us is how do we support the wraparound services that are necessary, uh, for folks to stay, um, and succeed in South Burlington? So that's everything from, uh, addressing, uh, housing affordability to childcare, to the issues of even wanting to make sure that we've got the right wraparound services and resources for our entrepreneurs. So this goal is really that human-centered goal about making sure not only if, if goal one is about having the enterprises and the innovation thrive in the ecosystem, the folks that really kind of fuel that become the talent. And so we want to make sure that we're supporting, uh, our residents to do that in a way that's really helpful. So to do that, um, we are suggesting four strategic initiatives under this goal. First and foremost is aligning our workforce and economic development, uh, efforts together, uh, as we had in goal one. Uh, one of the reasons that you want to launch those sector partnerships is, is really important where you can get the private sector, the education, your education providers, your workforce providers all together around the table to really identify what are those educational pathways, uh, and how do we start to create career pathways from those jobs? So for instance, if you're starting in electric aviation on the floor in a technical job, how do you, how do you, uh, scaffold up and move up the ladder, so to speak, to ensure that you can build a career pathway in those industries? So goal one is really centered on that. And we see the city playing an important convening role in that. One of the things that economic development is about is about pulling people together in those partnerships and the city can really lead on those efforts. Two point two, you've already made strategic efforts, uh, big advancements in a lot of your housing affordability with some of your, advancing some of your recent housing policy initiatives. Want to continue to do that and support that, but also think about how do we connect back to those other wraparound services? One of the things that came up a lot in our discussions with residents was the need for quality childcare, affordable childcare. So again, how do we support those, uh, support those types of enterprises? Uh, in terms of helping to get those types of businesses up and running, uh, to ensure that we're providing the right type of childcare, uh, that's necessary to support our workforce in the area. Uh, two point three is, is really centered on the idea of, about social capitalism, which is making sure that young professionals can connect to each other. Economic development is all about business and, and bringing businesses together, creating that ecosystem. You want to do the same thing with your residents and your talent. And particularly with young professionals, obviously there's young professionals initiatives out, uh, in, in Burlington and connecting to, uh, the, uh, the Burlington Chamber. One of the, one of the arguments that we have in the plan is how do we pull those residents and pull those initiatives into South Burlington? Perhaps we host some of our own events. There are recreational department. I know our rec parks and recs department is already doing some pretty cool work there. But also how do we do with our partners to get more of those activities happening in South Burlington as well? Um, and then two point four is, as I mentioned before, there's a lot of support services around small businesses, uh, in, in South Burlington. And so it's not about creating new support services, but it's about creating a unified platform and pathway, uh, for those, uh, entrepreneurs to be able to connect to those resources. So one of the things you'll see in the plan and the action plan, particularly around the implementation, is that we're identifying how do we map out those resident, map out those resources? And then start to put together that, that, uh, that platform or that resource center that makes accessing those resources really simple for South Burlington entrepreneurs. I'll go and do goal three, um, as well, Laura. Goal three is about transforming South Burlington into a vibrant destination to residents and visitors alike. So this is centered around a lot of our placemaking ideas, you know, uh, activating place, creating space. Um, and, and really, uh, build, bringing our placemaking, not only to city center, but our community neighborhoods. Um, and really thinking about unlocking, uh, that, that placemaking that really helps us kind of start to create that identity and that stickiness, uh, into South Burlington that's really important. We want people to come to South Burlington, hang out in South Burlington, build identity with South Burlington and feel like it's part of their community. And, and goal three is really centered on, on that as a destination. So how do we do that? Uh, three point one is again, working through the investments that have been made in city, civic, city center. Thinking about how do we activate that, that community around partnerships and programming? A lot of that's already happening, particularly with the library and the civic center there. Using that as gallery space and some of the pop-up restaurants that are, uh, some of the restaurants that are coming into the air, but continuing to think about how we're programming that space and being intentional about that. Three point two is a long-term play. It's this connection. And I know that you all have talked a lot about this as the governing body. The connection back to university mall and the, the opportunity that that will prevent, present to the community long-term. As it, is it all, it is a really important community anchor for us. How do we think about the next generation and what that would look like jointly as a community? Three point three is, uh, launching a hospitality and placemaking, uh, initiative across, across the city. So for instance, one of the things that is interesting fact that we came out of this, uh, out of the engagement was that most residents, when they come to the region, actually stay in South Burlington. Concentration of the hotels are there. So how do we connect, uh, that in terms of hospitality and stickiness? This is restaurant support, programming, events, all of those things that make us want to be a, a place to hang out. If we do that, um, should have a story to tell. And that's what three point four is really centered on, which is connecting with our regional partners, um, to do. which is connecting with our regional partners to do that, to make that connection. And then 3.5 is continuing to make the kinds of investments that you all are doing, which is around the active transportation infrastructure. So, the Ped Bridge and other things that are already happening are going to really play a big role in advancing our quality of place, and particularly the mobility connection to the city for residents. Laura, Goal Four?
Yep, and we are closing in, you guys. So, we'll take questions here in a moment. So, this Goal Four is ready for what's next. This is about making sure this, we're turning our attention now to those things that you have a lot of control over, and those are city processes, you know, having site libraries, making sure that there are tools to support everything that we've talked about so far. So, the central idea here is that you have the ability to start shaping the kind of growth that you want. And that is that climate-friendly, high-quality innovation growth we've been talking about throughout this presentation, and making sure that within the organization that your processes and procedures are in support of that will allow you to achieve that just all the faster. And then, again, this is going to have something to do with storytelling, which we've woven throughout this. So, there are five strategy within Goal Four. The first one is to look for opportunities to partner on redevelopment projects that advance City Center. So, this includes the Wilston Road Corridor as the gateway to Vermont, creating a welcoming environment. You all have a real strong suit. I should have said this at the beginning. You have a real strong suit when it comes to the built environment. You've got talented staff, you've got innovation with, you know, running its way through your codes. And so, making sure that each of these opportunities that you are ready to capitalize them is really important. Number two is all about permitting processes, making sure they're clear, efficient, and supportive that it is easy to navigate. Now, this is, you know, I told Paul earlier, you could be anywhere in the country and somebody would be complaining about the development processes. That's just a very common theme around the country. But here's how I would think about it, is the kind of economy that you're wanting, where you're getting entrepreneurs and innovators and people that are stretching for a new and different future, like with electric aviation, what they tend to be less patient with is the kind of blocking and tackling that it takes to get a site and develop a site and get things moving. And so, you making it easy is the same as you enabling the kind of economy that you want. Number three, again, this is pretty standard in economic development, is that just maintaining an inventory of those commercial and industrial spaces so that when companies come to you that are kicking the tires in South Burlington, you've got your answers ready on where their needs could be met. Four is about promoting investment that reflects your climate-smart and innovation-aligned identity. And this is toolbox kind of stuff. Again, this is organizational capacity that we need to build in order to make sure that that strong climate theme is running a thread throughout all of this. And then, the last one, number five, is that neighborhood center downtown along the Shelburne Road Corridor to complement City Center. So, the idea here, and Steven talked about this earlier, is placemaking can and should happen in more than one spot in any community. And this recognizes that you've got other places within the community where you can do some really interesting placemaking. All right, and the last one is Built to Deliver. This is about, how do we resource such that you are able to achieve the ambitions of this plan? And I'll just dive right into it. So, there are three strategies here. One is establishing an economic development function within the city government by creating dedicated staffing that coordinates with your internal team to lead implementation. So, I said it before, but I'll just punctuate it at this point. You have a really talented staff, a staff that I would say in most of the stakeholder engagements was called out as one of the community assets. And so, you don't need, there are strengths that you have in terms of the built environment, land use, City Center, all of that. But when it comes to economic development, in order to really take advantage of this plan, you are going to need to resource with someone that has a traditional or a more traditional economic development background. It'll just move faster when you add that capacity. Number two is improving internal coordination with digital tools and cross-training so that, you know, if, let's just talk about the inventory of sites and availability. All of those things need to be shareable amongst staff. It needs, when you start to track your pipeline of companies that are interested in expanding or growing, when you track your pipeline of entrepreneurs, you want someone to be able to call into the organization and get some information regardless of their point of entry. And number three is strengthening your voice in regional and state economic strategy. You are certainly a very prominent element of the state's economy and participating very actively in those state-led initiatives and planning efforts. I will tell you, one of the things that Steven and I observed is they are craving your participation. You are leading the economy of the state of Vermont in many ways, and they need your voice at the table. So, the last thing here is, I think Nicole said it well. We are here before you this evening to present the plan. Most of you have seen this plan evolving along the way. I believe it is on your agenda for approval. And I think that what's happening tonight is, first of all, you've made an investment. You've sent the first signal by putting the, by making sure that you have a good, long-range, robust plan in place. I do want to reiterate the fact that if all of these strategies, and if you were to see everything beneath that, in that next level of detail, it might be overwhelming. That's okay. It's a five-year roadmap. It's not designed for all of this to happen all at once. The mall, for example, as Steven mentioned, is a longer-term play. And there are some things that you can do right off the bat. There's a proven need. In all of the research that we did amongst the peers, having some dedicated professional capacity is key to turning plans into realities. And I think that tonight's signal is, once you adopt this plan, it is the most important signal that staff will receive that it's time to start thinking about resourcing and next steps as they begin the development of next year's budget. And with that, we will take questions. Jesse, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Would the council discuss this first, and then we'll have the public weigh in? Any comments? Elizabeth?
No, I had a chance to see a preview of the implementation plan. And, you know, on one hand, it is overwhelming. There's a lot to be done, but I think there's a lot to be done because it's necessary at this time. I don't think we have had the resources garnered in a way that Civic Soul has allowed us to really dedicate that energy to really thinking about what South Burlington could look like in the future. I'm really energized by the plan and am very supportive of it. I think it's coming at a time, too, where we have had questions about what our revenue stream is going to look like going forward in terms of what we're going to look like. So, I think it's timely to be looking at this. I know I did participate in the meeting last week, the implementation plan, and there's a lot of energy by the committee members who were asked, I think, by Nicole to kind of pick their top three or so. And I don't think I heard one person who had only three priorities. But people are thinking about it, and also thinking about it in what I believe is a thoughtful way in terms of a multi-year rollout. Some of the things that struck me as we were talking, and some were a little bit more tactical than others, but really aligning the workforce and economic development initiatives. And it's not embedded in this work plan, but having participated on the school side for so long and looking at what's happening with redistricting, I think the timing is really critical that we marry an economic development strategy with the potential conversations that are going to go on about redistricting and what our education is going to look like going forward. And as we might become a larger, part of a larger district, are there opportunities for silos of excellence in the K through 12 area that might support this economic development plan and the career pathing opportunities? I see networking and mentoring and experiential learning being a critical component of this, feeding this economic development plan, and really participating at the state level, as Laura mentioned, around presenting South Burlington as a leader with our focus on climate resiliency, with our focus on our rec programs, our bike ped programs that really represents a significant strategy going forward. I know this is a little bit more tactical, but the funding of this is going to be critical. And there were several grant opportunities that the committee was talking about. And I'm not sure I have the right one, but I think the Leahy Institute is one of the grant programs. And oftentimes, there's a lot of focus on the rural parts of our state. And that's true particularly with some of the new TIF programs. But one of the things that was brought up is South Burlington offers a lot in its current state, mentoring other programs. So, the opportunity to potentially participate in grant programs that would fund our strategic initiatives going forward, but would allow our learnings and our experiences to be passed on to other parts of the state that might be at an earlier stage of development could be a significant way to fund those efforts going forward. So, I'm really energized by the plan. I know it's a lot of work. Looking at the implementation plan, there was a lot of detail, but it is laid out over that five-year period. And it makes it a little bit more palatable in terms of digesting it, though.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Andrew?
Thanks, Tim. So, first I want to congratulate Laura, Steven, Nicole, you know, our Economic Development Committee, and Alana, all the staff that worked on this. I mean, it's really a marvel. I mean, it's a really, really well-written, well-thought-out plan. So, congratulations. I wanted to echo one thing that Elizabeth said in terms of the implementation plan, the draft that we got to peek at. There's a lot of detail there, and it particularly lays out, you know, for each strategy, the elements that Civic Soul is suggesting that we tackle to achieve those strategies, including timelines for those elements. So, it's like another whole layer beneath this. And I don't know if you guys can flash that on the screen real quick. If you can, it's okay, but it'd be interesting for folks to just see a picture that quickly because it's really well-done, particularly the timeline for each of the elements to really guide us. So, that's pretty cool. You know, as we build out this plan and focus on our development and our growth, I also just, and I know we will, but I want to make sure that we're very conscious of, you know, the environmental services that go into measuring our growth and what does growth really mean? And keep that in mind, right? Keep in mind our natural resources and the services that, and the growth and the attributes that our water and air and our forests contribute to us. And, you know, the monetary value almost of all the services. We need to really keep that foremost in our consciousness as we move forward. And I want to ask Nicole a question, which is, you know, of all these strategies, goals, elements, what if you, you know, if you were up here, or you're in Jesse's shoes, like, what's the, maybe this is a hard question, what's the number one thing we should prioritize to move this forward, in your view? Or number two, or two, or two or three?
One or two or three.
What would you say?
Well, I think there's several. But I think first and foremost is communicating the plan and getting our community focused on economic development and that it can be achieved in a very sustainable, climate-friendly way. That's number one. I think there's ways to communicate the plan that bring young professionals in, that bring people from other quadrants within South Burlington to really get it out there. The other thing is, I think we could better use the Economic Development Committee and the skill sets on that group to do some of the implementation. So, number one, I think, is tell the story of why we're doing this. Get people involved in economic development and learning about what it is. And I think that there are also things within year one that don't require a big monetary investment. And I think we should really look at those to tick off some progress. Show action, show progression on the plan. You know, what we don't want is a strategy or a strategic plan that everybody loves and it's got great graphics and it goes in a binder for five years. So, I think we've really got to show some action there. Everybody talks about the aviation hub and everything surrounding the airport. Beta's getting more and more press every day. They're delivering airplanes now. We've got to maximize that and really seize the day.
So, then if I could add that, and I agree, I mean, you know, marketing the plan and getting everyone engaged in this is really important. The one thing that maybe I see as, you know, also a key next step for the city and maybe for Jesse and staff is kind of the items in Goal Five, right? Like, to have key staff dedicated to pushing this forward. I don't know if that's realigning, refocusing existing staff. Maybe we're already focused that way, or, you know, do we have to think about budgeting? But I'd love to hear Jesse, your views on that, right? Goal Five, and how do we move that forward? Because that, to me, seems to be like the next key to this, from my perspective.
So, thank you for that, Andrew. I agree. While I'm speaking, Laura, would you, do you have the ability to flash up the implementation plan quickly? Thanks.
I'm looking for it.
Or Steven, thank you. I absolutely agree. And, you know, we have started on our advisory team, Nicole, Alana, Paul and I, thinking about what that organizational structure could look like. One of the things that's on the website that we didn't talk through tonight is the work they did looking at our peer communities and what's been successful in similarly-sized communities to move these things forward. We did, of course, didn't want to get out ahead of you adopting a plan. So, what we're really looking for is, as Laura said, that adoption is a signal to us to go forward and put together some recommendations for you. But I appreciate your orientation to resources.
Start by complimenting everybody on a remarkable plan. And shows a lot of work that we have to do and a lot of promise. And two things that really stand out for me in the plan are the idea of developing South Burlington as an innovation hub. And I think about Hula, which I'm sure you guys, I hope you guys visited while you were here, and wondering where you guys or how you envision South Burlington really attracting and creating a vibrant innovation hub? We have Beta, we have OnLogic. But is this something that's happening near them? Is it happening in City Center? Is it happening at U-Mall? Or how's that? Is there a vision for how and where that's going to happen?
Yeah, there are a couple of ways to think about this. That's a great question. Actually, Steven's got it probably. Can y'all see that we pulled up the worksheet that you mentioned a moment ago?
Yes.
Okay. One of the ways that we have found to get very focused, and this will cover both innovation and workforce, is this idea of what's called sector partnerships. There are a lot of economic development organizations that will do sector partnerships. So, now we're going straight back to that idea that we've identified these target sectors. And within those, you're looking for innovation, okay? But they only talk to the companies. And what they don't, who they don't put in the room is they don't put those people that are doing workforce development, workforce training, your higher education partners. And the way that we conceptualize these, and by the way, I do think this would be good year-one work. Let's put the, let's do all that mapping. Let's determine within aviation, for example, who, where are the career, what are the career pathways? What pieces of your education system are contributing to those career pathways in terms of training and education? Let's put people in a room and form a really full-throated sector partnership. And then they will start telling us what it is that it's, what they need next. And so, that might be workforce, it might be housing. We, you know, believe it or not, we've worked in places where the number one thing that, the problem that people had to solve is they couldn't address the talent strategy unless address the talent strategy unless there was a spousal program because they couldn't recruit. This was in the case of a healthcare strategy. They couldn't recruit doctors because they didn't have a way of finding spousal employment to get the family to move. It could be supply chain. And by the way, spoiler alert, it will be around supply chain, at least in some of these conversations. So one answer to your question is what's sitting in the plan, and we just touched on it at a very high level. But this notion of sector partnerships in your target sectors and, and we would have the conversation within those sectors. What is the role of innovation and what do we need to amp that up? So I think that's one question, one answer to your question. If your question had to do with an entrepreneur center, an incubator, and how do we connect people, some of that's going to be navigation, as Stephen said earlier. Let's not make people look and, uh, look around and Google and do all that to figure out where resources are already available to them. So some of that is creating systems that allow people to navigate those resources easily. And some of that ties to the placemaking at city center. So I think on your startup businesses, it's going to be about navigation and a centered place. And within your sector targets, it's going to be about really, really good sector partnerships and we would prioritize that work.
Can I add to that just as a little more, um, you know, one of the things when I think about looking at these implementation plans and how to achieve the um, innovation hubs and the, uh, through the sector partnerships is that there is so much work the council and the committee has already done pointing us in those directions. You know, we've already invested in the TIF district and have those capital projects going, investing in Williston Road, investing in Shelburne Road, investing in San Remo Drive. We are so focused on where we need to be focused to geographically to support that kind of innovation hub. That really what we need now is the, as Laura said, those sector partnerships, bringing those key players to the table and saying we as a city could say, well, we like that storefront, but they may say, you know what, actually our, our trucks come in this way, or our employees come in this way, or we need a link to this educational facility. And because the community's already done all of the thought around infrastructure and zoning, we have the bones to be able to respond quickly when they tell us what they need.
Yeah, I was, um, just really thinking about how we create a center for, for catalyst where, where entrepreneurs and people are going, I can go there and I can meet other people like me and I can bounce ideas around and I can get excited and there's this energetic space, which often needs to be a physical space and Hula is a good example of that working on the waterfront in Burlington. And how do we create that? The other piece I was wondering about is we talk about destination development and we've got city center, which is just at its birth, I would say, and what kind of character and identity that really creates so that people look at South Burlington and know that it's someplace they really want to be, which is who are the businesses that we attract and how do we get a really good mix of food people and, and funky places that people we don't want to be just another typical American town with the same cookie cutter chain businesses. And how do we foster that? It's a big, I mean, I look at it and I see this potential and then it's like, how do we attract those unique businesses that will really make South Burlington stand out as a place that, oh man, I want to go there. So that's my feedback. And I think the plan gives us a lot of really good tools to work towards it.
Thanks, Lori. Ann?
I'm breathless, just, um, listening this, um, and I read it before in preparation. I was glad to have the double. And this really represents incredible work. Andrew, something that you said, actually that maybe everyone has sort of touched on, um, is the piece in terms of goal three, a destination that draws you in. Economic development may be what we need, but that alone, unless you consider recreation and other things part of economic development as well. But one of your initial goals or was the vision of a growth that's, um, built for everyone. And, um, keeping that in mind, I see that, that you've tried to do that. And for me, you know, I guess goal three is the one that is most, um, important because it encompasses the other ones, um, that you have on the way that I look at this. Um, and I love, is there a way that we can take the, um, snapshot of South Burlington and get that out there? Those first couple of slides were just amazing. I mean, can we just, you know, this is who we are and we are an incredible community. Despite the fact that, you know, yesterday was, or today, today is tax day or you know, all that, you know, and so we're going to grumble and things like that. But we are an incredible community and what has started in city center is just, um, and that took ten plus years in, in making and a collaboration federally, state and locally. So I see us moving forward with that and I hope the council doesn't get in your way. And I really like the, um, the way you have reached out and I think that we all need to do that is to continue to reach out to the community to hear what they say. And to let our great staff, um, move us forward.
Thank you, Ann. I appreciate the plan. Thanks very much for all the hard work. You know, the, the thing that strikes me is that it seems like we're already doing a lot of the things that are already in this plan. I mean, you know, city center has been a, a long-term development project. It, it, it's not complete. It won't be complete for years to come. The U-Mall is a huge resource that will take years to redevelop, um, housing in city center is, uh, is booming right now and it will continue to grow. So we're, I think we're hitting all of those points, but the, the, the value that I see is that, and which is really important to the committee, right? Is that, and the committee's been asking to have a plan for quite a while. And having the talent within the, the city staff to produce what we've produced so far, but then putting a layer of a plan on top of it really, uh, would help, I think, you know, organize what the city does and what the committee does and, and how the rest of the, the commercial part of the community responds in trying to push us forward in, you know, for the next twenty, fifty years, because I think the cycle of innovation is shortening, you know, as we go along. You know, we don't have a big steel industry anymore. You know, we don't have deck anymore. Global Foundries used to, you know, when his IBM had eight thousand employees, two thousand, it's got about two thousand right now is Global Foundries. Right? But you've got new, new innovative, uh, companies that are, are growing up. So I would like to adopt this plan. Um, I'd like to see what staff have for ideas and how to take it and, and use it to help push us forward. The schools are a really important aspect of this because we need people trained to do these types of jobs and we want them to be interested to do these types of jobs as well. I mean, I'm continually astounded by the interns we had this summer at Global Foundries. I may have said this before, about how dialed in they were to the type of work that we do there. And when they were getting ready to leave last week, I said, so how did you enjoy it? We loved it. What did you like about it? The place is, it's a mechanical playground. It's a device playground. It's an IT playground. I mean, not that they're, you know, at a playground, but the point is that there are tons of things that it is very rich in its ability to satisfy their curiosity and produce useful items, you know, in their, their day-to-day work. So that's my two cents.
I move to adopt the South Burlington Economic Development.
Let's see if we have anybody.
Oh, we want public comment.
Any public comment inside? Nobody here? How about?
So just a reminder to those online who, um, have joined in the last little bit. We are, this is our first inaugural Zoom webinar meeting. So if you would like to make a comment on this or any agenda item, you can either, I believe you can just click the raise hand button or put in the Q and A section that you are interested in speaking and what agenda item and the chair will call on you and I will unmute you. I'll give not seeing any yet, but.
I don't know what it looks like when they do. So I guess we don't have any, is there any way, other way to look and see or is it?
So there.
No open questions? And so no typed content from anybody there. No raised hands. Okay. Go ahead.
I think that's a really good sign of the quality of the presentation and the quality of the plan. That there are not a lot of questions out, outstanding. So thanks for the work.
So I move to adopt the South Burlington Economic Development Strategic Plan.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do you have any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. The Economic, Economic Development Committee now has an economic development plan. Go forward and execute. Thank you, Nicole and
Thanks, Nicole.
And Alana. And Laura and Stephen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's move on to item nine, which is, uh, discuss the education and enforcement of speed and behavior on the city's shared use paths.
So this was a council requested item. Um, you asked us specifically to look at if you have authority to regulate. So you have a brief memo from the city attorney's office on that. Otherwise, it is your discussion.
Can I, can I make a comment? So, um, I mentioned when I was at the Bike Ped committee meeting that this was on our agenda. And unbeknownst to me, that, that committee already spent, um, a lot of time on this very subject and, uh, did a lot of research, had lots of discussions, had a draft memo that they put together, the recommendations that's still drafted, has to be refined a little bit. Not exactly sure what, why they didn't move that forward, but that, that work all sits out there. And so, um, learning that, I would maybe suggest that we, we ask them to finalize that work and come present to us, you know, as soon as we're able. And then we can have a more, uh, fulsome and, and educated, uh, conversation around this topic.
I would agree with that. I was, um, surprised to, to hear or to learn of the extent of the discussion. Partly, and perhaps I misheard that couple of individuals who did talk about that in earlier, uh, council meetings. It seemed like they didn't think that they had been heard by the committee and maybe they didn't, whatever. But could we put a timeline on them? It, it, uh, sometimes, uh, people in committees nee- need a timeline, nee- need a deadline and like, okay, we need this by this date. Because I, I understand that it's complex and there, they had everything from speed limits to colors of signs, to spacing of signs and all of, of that and, and.
So I agree. I mean, I, so they meet once a month. They're probably going to need a meeting or two to finalize. So I'm not exactly, that maybe brings us into October or so for them, right? We should probably give them a meeting or two.
For a first draft.
To finalize their recommendations as a committee to vote on them and, right?
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Yeah, if they've, if they've already had a lot of discussion and done some initial work on this, let's, let them go forward because they're a committee and this is the type of thing they work on, because it's bike and ped.
It's what they do. Yeah, it's what they do.
So I think it makes perfect sense.
I'd just like to add, there's been some, some feedback from residents about having shared use paths and having bikes on the same path with walkers and South Burlington has already gone down the path, so to speak, of using the shared use path model.
That's why it's called a share use, shared use path.
That's why it's called a shared use path. So I think debating whether bikes need to be there is not part of the conversation at this point. And for me, when I'm on the path and thinking about it, it's about care consideration and respect and how the, the conversation in the committee was about speed limits aren't enforced and we don't even enforce them on our roads. How are we going to enforce them on a bike path? And it's how do we develop the culture of the people that are using the path? It, whether it's education or training or whatever. Because whatever rules we get, they're only going to be as effective as the responsibility and integrity that each rider or walker brings to it and I hope we can find a way to incorporate that into what gets brought forward.
Do we want Barb to come online so we can tell them or does he want to respond to us or? Did you want to make a comment, Barb? Okay, hold on a second. We just.
Well, so just by the way, right? So they have, um, a meeting September tenth and then October eighth. So maybe we, we plan to ask them to present to us following the October eighth.
Sure.
Meeting. If, if they can do it sooner, that'd be great, but, right? Like mid-October or so. That makes sense.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Let's just leave it at that then. But Barb Service, did you want to say something? Green light? Oh, he did.
I have a green light. I have a green light. Barbara Service, South Burlington resident. As one of the people who went to the Bike Ped Committee probably four years ago and asked them to start dealing with this, I am really pleased. And I agree with you, Lori, about the culture. I want to tell you about something that happened on Williston Road the other day. Most of you know that I walk all over South Burlington. And I literally had a kid on an e-bike tell me to get out of the way. So I'm healthy, but a lot of my almost eighty-year-old friends are not as healthy as I am. And so I would encourage part of this to be at least a discussion with the schools about whether or not we can do some educational programs in the schools. Um, there's been some conversation in the, in the media lately about the effect of, um, electric scooters and, and e-bikes and kids and all of that sort of stuff. So it is, it is a huge cultural issue. But I think if we don't start young enough, I mean, I, I have to tell you, I was appalled. I didn't even, I was speechless as this kid just told me to get out of the way. And I was on the sidewalk, minding my own business. I will say that on Dorset Street, where there clearly is a cement, cement sidewalk for me to walk on and an asphalt path for the bicyclists, I don't usually encounter a problem there. But it's the other places. And I will say, uh, so I'm picking on the kids for a minute, but I will also say that the adults are generally not a whole lot better. But I will say that lately, um, in the last week, I've had three adults who have said, on your left, as they were going by me on the street. So I, I, I'm not sure what the answer is to change the culture, but I will express my gratitude that you are dealing with this subject and hope that, that we can find some good ways to deal with it. Um, and including starting teaching kids from younger ages about being responsible. And I will say I also worry about them not wearing helmets, but that's a separate issue. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Um, safe routes to school could be a conduit for information back to parents about proper behavior, you know, when kids are biking to school. Uh, Bob Britt?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hi.
Hi. Yeah, I, I, I would appreciate the time or the, I think the committee would appreciate the time to come back with a recommendation. We may be able to do it just in Sept- at our September meeting since we had progressed quite, quite far, um, before summer set in and, uh, things got slow. So, um, yeah, well, so maybe the second meeting in October, but per- perhaps the first meeting in October uh, following our September meeting would be fine. And, uh, you know, the committee is, has leaned towards this need for education, for courtesy, changing the Changing the ethic of the city and finding ways of reaching out, um, to residents. To, you know, try to make South Burlington. Uh, the most courteous bike and bike and e-bike city in, or town in the state.
I love it.
Great, Bob. Thanks.
And I'd love to see that. Development transcend the Bike and Ped Committee and. Go across our community and have us be the most considerate community in.
That's right, as part of our economic development plan.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments on this? And let's move on to item ten, which is review council liaison roles and appointments to committees and possibly take action and also. Discuss, uh, the role of the committees.
So, uh, I had a, we had previously talked about having this as, uh, with Counselor Scanlon leaving, um, needing to reassign committee liaison roles. Um, so that's what's on your, um, on your cover sheet and just a reminder about also what the. Council liaison roles are, um, and the expectation of that, but I think some of you us would like to have a bigger conversation about the. Roles of committees generally and staff and liaison appoint, um, roles. So I will stop talking.
Andrew, you had an interest in this, right?
Yeah, sure. You want to have the big discussion first and do the liaison appointments or how would you want to proceed?
Have the big discussion first.
Okay. I mean, I think that, um.
I don't think your mic's on.
Yeah, so I, 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 really from my perspective, I just wanted to really review our bylaws. That set out how committees, um, are intended to interact. With the council, right? What, what we each do, really, and then how staff and the council liaison facilitates that. I think the bylaws do say it, but maybe it just needs to be, um, reviewed and reiterated. So that we're on the same page and, and to ensure we're on the same page. So just to read from the bylaws. Um, it says, in order to best align the intentions and work of the committees to the council goals. Annual work plans are developed, and work plans of the committees. Between April and July of each year, the committees develop a set. The committee's leadership team, SCD council, develop a set of fiscal year policy, project strategies. Committees propose, committees propose annual priorities to the staff and liaison. These annual priorities are integrated into the full set of priorities considered by the council. So in my mind, it's very clear that. You know, we expect, anticipate and encourage. Our committees to come up with ideas for how we move this city forward and how those committees move forward. With the, um, charter and, you know, the, what, the, the goals that we've set out for each committee. And the committees are encouraged and free to have those ideas. That's why we have terrific people. On these committees are really experienced in the work that, that they do. And ideally, you know, that plan would then come to us before we finalize our work plan for the year and we would have a conversation with. The chair, who I was representing the committee about, about those ideas and which ones we think. Makes sense and which we'd like them to work on and maybe which ideas we should defer or, or, or not work on, have a good conversation about that. And then incorporate the ones that we like in, into our timeline. So I, I think it's pretty clear that's how this is intended to work. Um. And. Just, just want to make sure I suppose we're all on the same page on that.
I, um. Concur with that interpretation. And when I look at the committees that we have, I see them as our subject matter experts. We have really talented people on these committees and, uh, just like I don't want to tell staff. What to do because they are skilled at what they do and I need input from them. I want input from our committees about what they see are important in their sphere of influence. That's why we have them. We also have them so that when we have tasks that fit in that sphere. They can implement those tasks, but I. Think it's important for us to have a two-way street. Um, to really utilize the talents and skills that we have in those committees and. Just as we have a bike rack for our priorities, I think that. The same can exist for committees. So they may have something that they really want to see worked on. It may have to be deferred for a year, two years or whatever. The one other thing is. Some of the things that get brought forward involves staff time. Some of them don't necessarily. And with an active council liaison, there's a lot that can be done between the council liaison and the committees. Where work can get done that doesn't have to add additional workload to our already overloaded staff. So. For the year and a half I've been on the council, it feels like. There's been an effort to try and sort out how this back and forth goes and. I hope that we can get really clear so that there isn't confusion going forward.
I agree. Everything that's been said. I think this is, I mean, I, I think that you are articulating the bylaws that have existed since twenty twenty-two. I think, um, there's a lot of work that's been done to. Uh, better define the committee structure than existed when we started. I think there's a ton of work that's been done between. The leadership team and the council to define a shared work plan for the year. I think, you know, we had a shared goal between the leadership team and the council to really ensure that. Folks didn't feel like they were spinning their wheels and were doing work that the council had asked them to do or was at least aligned to. Policy priorities of the councils. Um, you know, since we've adopted these bylaws, you've also adopted a city plan. So some of that work of is this a priority or is this not a priority? Um, also can be looked back to the city plan to, um, be informed by. Um, and I, I mean, one of the things I'm excited about, about this conversation coming to the fore is. I think historically the staff liaisons have been the primary support to committees and it's, um. It's a huge, it's a huge investment the taxpayers make in their time to do that work. Um, and I think what we're talking about is potentially a shift of that more towards the council liaison roles to ensure that. What the work, the work that's being done is aligned to the full body's priorities. Um, and I think staff would really welcome that support because I think sometimes staff feel. Really torn between I've been given this work plan, but all these smart people are asking me to do things. Um, and I think a, a better partnership between committee chairs and council liaisons and staff liaisons would greatly enhance. That feeling of efficacy on everybody's part.
And having a more engaged and collaborative relationship between the staff liaison and the council liaisons. For me, I think would be really helpful and really, um, productive. The last thing I want to add is because there was a turnover in staff. Right about the time that work plans were being brought forward. The NRCC's work plan got lost in the sauce, did not make it in the timeframe that we normally do. Our work plans and, um. I would very much like to make sure that we give the NRCC the time. They need to get their work plan to us effectively so that we can review it and incorporate it into. Our priorities and strategies work for the year. And that may mean some of what they bring forward has to wait till next year, but. It's being the liaison for the, for the committee. It was disappointing to me that their work plan was not able to get in, in time. And I think they have a legitimate reason to quote, get an extension. So I just wanted to share that.
That was my understanding.
Okay. Just wanted to get it on the record.
Somebody in the audience wants to come up and speak? Remember, make the green light bright green and identify yourself. Nope, bright green. Oh.
Larry Cupferman, South Burlington Natural Resources Committee. Thanks Lori for that, but, uh, we do have, we had a work session today. Uh, committee work session. Um, and, uh, we have, um. Based on that discussion, we do have a revised work plan that complies somewhat to the policy. The PPS document. And, uh, but I have to say, we were working on to the assumption that we, our work plan was derived from the city plan. I think we lost some understanding of the process in the transition of staff. We can put it to that, but we should have something that, that the committee should work, um, should be able to vote on at the September meeting. Um, and, uh, we have that, we just have that draft. It includes, uh, of course, hopefully finished with the open space master plan. Would be a big, uh, big part of that work as well as the, uh, working with the city arborist to develop the, uh, plan for trees on city property. And right, and rights of way. Um, those are the two big ones. And then we do have a list of, uh, things that we'd like to consider in next year's plan as well. So that is underway and like I say, we met this afternoon. Um, sort of coincidental to the discussion that, the broader discussion that you're having, but just wanted to report that out. Thanks.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Any other public comment? Anybody online? Bob's microphone is still on. Is that just because he left it on or he's? Who's being?
Can I make a quick comment, Tim?
Yes.
I feel like the, um. Annual work that's done around policy priorities and strategies informs the committee's work and hopefully the committees have. Prefaced that process with their recommendations. So my hope would be that. The disconnect or any disconnect that, that might exist because that timeframe is now, I think it's pretty consistent. That committees might come up with a work plan and that, um, council is reviewing those and locking in a priorities and strategies. Plan, um, in that July timeframe and that to me should inform, most committees meet monthly, so. Those plan, those priorities and strategies to me should be. A good chunk of the committee's work after those are formally adopted. And certainly there's a lot of expertise that resides on the committee and I would expect based on interest, enthusiasm, what's going on. Socially, environmentally, whatever it might be, that there will be expertise that would come forward and say, gee, I, I wish the city was doing something on this. But I would hope that those discussions result in a recommendation for the following July. Council consideration and that's where those would reside. So there's not. A disconnect between a work, a working committee's recommendations, what gets firmed up, recognizing. And I just, I want to be clear, I've heard some comments that things might get delayed a year. I don't know that everybody's good idea will ever make it on to a council priorities and strategies and policies plan. So I think we owe it to committees also, once things come up, if they're not consistent with. The direction council's taking to sort of say, pursue it your own risk or, um, to say that's. On a bike rack indefinitely. Um, and we have set a precedent at the last presentation that. If it's, if it doesn't make it within a certain amount of period, period of time, it's comes off totally. So it would have to be a, a new revisitation, um. Uh, kind of from ground zero. That precedent was set with this last policy discussion.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Um, we also have to review the current appointments?
Sorry, Tim, can I just, just add, just want, just to, I think we're all saying the same thing, but the. Just to be really clear, right? My perspective in this would be that the committees come up with a work plan first. They, they present that to us as we review their work plans. We have a conversation with them about their work plans. Um, we, we fold in as we think appropriate those work plans into our. Priority document and then that. Lets everyone know what we think they should be working on. Is that?
Yeah, I think the only, the fundamental difference to me is the initial work plan is a recommendation. And then what gets adopted by council is more of a firm.
And i- in those meetings is a council liaison that can do some guidance work, right? If, if possible at that time.
Yeah, and the one, the one thing somebody brought up, and I don't know the nuances of the situation you're talking about, but, um. There has been, I'll speak for the housing committee, there's been a fair amount of turnover in the housing committee, so. Even though there is a work plan that's been developed and proposed and accepted by council. I feel like there will be various committees that will go through leadership or membership transition that will. Just fall into the natural cycle of the next, the next go-round, um, because it, because again, everything's done on an annual basis. So I don't think from a policy and priorities standpoint, we'll lose ground when that happens. But I think that is a natural function of turnover and leadership and potentially different focus of. You know, reconfigured committees.
I agree with everything you said, Elizabeth, and the, the one caveat I have to that is. Because of the staff turnover that happened this year, at the time work plans were coming forward. That's why the NRCC is in a unique situation this year and. I don't expect that to happen going forward, but. Life happens.
True.
Might that be the function in the future of the council liaison? To remind the committee that this is coming up and this is what you had last year and. Whatever, whatever. And so that when there is transition, whether it is. Transition of leadership of the committee and they're like a headless committee. Perhaps the role of the liaison who doesn't have to go to every meeting or things like that, but is to say this is. That, that this is our understanding of where you left off.
But they should go to every meeting.
They what?
They should go to every meeting.
No, it, it says that they don't.
But when they're here.
When they're here, there you go.
I, I, I looked at the, I looked at the things and it says they don't have to.
I know. It's one of those shouldn't shall things, you know? So we, we also needed on this item to review the current appointments, right? And I'm looking across this, I don't see the Ann Pugh name anywhere here. What's going on with that?
It's not a problem.
So these are your current liaison appointments, um, prior to Counselor Pugh joining team.
Is there? Is, is, are there some that you were really interested in? Are there, is there anybody here that feels overloaded besides the ones that you go to voluntarily that you don't have to go to? Ann, I thought you would have had a list before you got here.
Well, no, I, I was hoping you'd forget this whole thing. No. Well, um. I will serve wherever I'm needed. Um. The things that are of interest to me are, are of very clear interest to other people on this. Who, who have. You know, and I mean, that would be things. Like recreation and park or bicycle and pedestrian. I mean, I see that the, you are covering energy. Now, if you expect me to go to energy and I can go, um, I'll sit there. Now, if you expect me to go to energy and I can go, I'll sit there. And I won't understand probably. No, I mean, I, I can report back. But I would have little input. I, I, I believe. It depends upon what the committee is.
One comment I'll make, Anne, in your defense, maybe.
Do you mean you're not buying my trying to get out of it?
No, I'm buying, I'm buying it. I'm supporting, no. Given that you are, have said that you're not going to run in the spring. And you are only with us for a pretty limited period of time.
You're already kicking me out?
No, I'm not, but I can say for me, it took me a while to get up to speed with how to really interact with the committees. And unless there are committees that are, are missing the support that they need. It might make sense to, to wait until we have a counselor who's here for a full, a full term.
I, I appreciate you're trying to rescue me. I am fully capable
I know.
Of sitting in and actually.
Contributing.
Con- contributing or getting the process. I'm sort of teasing.
So you're interested in bike and ped, and you're also on the safe routes to school. Do you have any interest of giving the bike and ped to Anne or?
We, you know, we talked about folding safe routes to school into bike pads. I, I think that's just going to be short-lived.
Okay.
Honestly.
You could be a sexton.
I could be what?
You could be on this, a sexton.
One, one of us could, could relinquish that role.
Well, can't you have another one or is it?
Do we need three?
We, you can't have three.
Oh, can't have three.
We're in the joint council.
It's a council meeting.
I mean, public arts is a possibility. I mean, I.
As I said, I will serve wherever it, and it seems that people are very attached to where they are right now.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we let you take over public art?
Okay.
And it's a great group of people. I'm going to miss them dearly and their staff liaison. But in March, you know, there's an opportunity for me to go back there possibly. We'll see.
Okay.
Okay. Does that sound good?
That sounds fun. When does, does public art have a regularly scheduled meeting?
Yeah, it's five thirty to seven on Tuesdays, the second Tuesday. Yeah, it's like the second Tuesday. They're like a week after us, I think.
Let's.
I can't remember.
Okay.
Anyway, it's like that. Okay.
Third, five thirty, third Tuesday. Third Tuesday at five thirty.
And I would love to have you come to any wrecking parks meeting that you have interest in.
As a member of the public.
Yeah.
Can I bring up a related issue?
Sure. Is that good with you, Anne?
Sure.
Okay.
So I was at the housing committee and we were getting an update from Kelsey on some of the planning commission work. And one of the things, I know planning commission is a statutory committee. But one of the things I was concerned with was that council provided some direction at our last meeting about the revisiting the land behind the Doubletree. In terms of the updated LDRs and also on the, I believe, the bedrock removal standard, performance standards. And what I don't think we were in a position to hear was what might get pushed out by the planning commission in terms of work that was already on their work plan. And that included in-depth planning of the town center on Shelburne Road. Which now seems to be modified to scoping and visioning. And also the interface between the airport and the neighborhood, which is now pushed out to twenty twenty seven. With, I think, some similar maybe scoping or scoping or visioning. And one of the things I wanted to just put forward is if there are things that we make a decision as council that cause changes in work that we believe is going to be happening in the current fiscal year. I feel that that is something at a minimum we should be informed of, but also have the potential to reconsider where we've, we've sent a message of a different priority that has caused the, the work to change. So that came up. I, I can't say that this is my, what I heard. And I guess I want to better understand that, and I don't know if this would be the only area that would be impacted by a council decision. Just wanted to put that forward.
Great, thanks. Finch for this item? All right, you've got a committee.
Could I just clarify that you then are going to stay covering energy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it says covered.
So just to clarify, I'm on the art committee.
Public arts.
The public art committee and the subs, the, when he, when you can't go to the parks and rec. Or I just invited to go to parks and rec.
Love to have you come anytime you want. And you could go when I'm not there.
Great. Okay.
Clarities to whether it's a role or an invitation.
I'll take both.
All right, moving on to eleven, discuss the process to potentially extend the contract between the city council and city manager. Potentially, I think just a process to extend the contract between the city council and city manager. I guess we need a plan.
Yeah, so when, just a little table setting. When we had my review this spring, as you all know, my contract expires next June. I always like to know if I'm going to be out of a job in X number of months. So we talked about having a conversation this summer about how we want to proceed once with that extension, if you so choose. You, the five of you can treat that however you want. There is no, there is no statute or law about how or ordinance about how you do, how you negotiate my contract. I will share historically what has happened here and in Winuski. Is that the council would appoint two people to negotiate directly with me. The council then could have, much like we do with negotiations, could have an executive session of just you to talk about the parameters with which to give direction to those two counselors. And then the three of us would have conversations and bring back something for the full council to consider. Obviously, the full council and I would need to agree on any final things. But it's totally, it's your prerogative.
And remind me, the last time we did this, it was Helen and me?
I think it was primarily Helen, but yes, Helen and you were the signed people.
Okay, all right. So does the council want to appoint two people to pursue this? So Andrew was one. Is the chair usually? I mean, because I was the chair before, but and I, I did help with Kevin Dorn, with Dave Kaufman once, with Helen once, I think. But that was a long time ago.
I saw Elizabeth express interest also.
And do you have time to work on this? You, you would. No, I'd be glad to defer. I just want to make sure you have time because you're also, you know, on the superintendent, you know, selection. You're not, okay, not on the interim. Okay, but on the one half of that? You, you don't know, okay. So you're both up for this? Okay, all right. And what's the schedule like?
So. I demand a contract tomorrow.
When do you want to see, when would you like the council to be able to, like, have a? When, when do you think a, a negotiating contract should be ready to be signed? What, what month is it? Like May? Or I don't, I don't know what your timeline is like.
So I would like, if we are not renewing my contract, I would like some certainty about that in enough time.
The other thing.
The pro of doing it sooner rather than later is that we can build into the FY twenty seven budget, whatever we want to build into it. So or whatever we come to agreement on. So there is a, a financial benefit to that. Which means we would want some certainty in late November, late October, early November. That's one, one motivation. Other than that, uncertainty, there's, there's no other deadline.
Does that work?
I mean, end of October, early November honestly sounds quick. I don't know. I mean, it, it sounds.
Oh, boy, what are you gonna negotiate?
Hopefully, it's just a meeting or two and we're good to go. Your mic's off again, Andrew.
So Colin, you can help us with this? Okay, and just, there, there might be need for some data?
He would furnish the current contract.
And say data, you know?
If you ask for that, probably if there's benchmarking.
Colin, you can help us with that too? Okay.
I'll come down here, Colin.
Well, I, I mean, I presume that, I mean, you just talked about there was an evaluation.
I think, I think he's talking about comps.
Yeah, comp.
Oh, oh, comp debt, okay.
So just to be clear for all the council and the community, in this particular case, the city attorney is representing the council, not me. And can advise you all directly without me in the mix of whatever you need. In, in my experience, comps can come from the HR department through Colin. I will also, I also have comps that I will provide as part of negotiation, but certainly if you want independent comps.
So I mean, that's the only reason I'm a little bit reluctant to say we can get it done in October. And how fast it would be to get comps together. And, you know, if, if it's easy and the data is readily available, then this process can move really fast.
Maybe we can, good evening. Maybe we can talk offline about what comps you're looking for, but other, other municipalities, I'm sorry, are you looking for, like, what range, how, how far away? Vermont exclusively out of state, the rate, I mean, we could, we could search all over and, and ask all over. But it's kind of up to you what kind of range you'd like to, to seek out.
At what point would you have a list of, like, demands that are different from the current contract?
Negotiate with us right now, would you please?
It's a back and forth. I mean, from my experience, it's kind of a back and forth. It's kind of a list of demands. There's the current contract. You know, there's a discussion that goes back and forth, like, you know, what do you think about this? Well, what do you think about that? And then an offer is made. So, I mean, but do, I mean, is that what you want to do is to have, you have a list of, of like demands that you would like to have to present to them?
So I certainly have things I would like to speak to the council about. I think, and yes, that is usually how it goes, that each side has a, has a position. And you share, you jointly share those positions and then you talk them through. I think that it may be, I would, I mean, again, this is, this is one of the most offered things managers do. Because I negotiate, I do your negotiation, right? Like, that is what you pay me to do, and now I'm on the other side of that. I would recommend that you all at the next meeting have a quick executive session to talk among the five of you about what's important to the five of you. And then I would be working on that on my behalf as well, and then we would join, we would kind of trade proposals. And see where we are and see what the universe of things is to talk about. I will say, you know, it's public record, it's, you know, I, I think this, we've renewed this contract now twice. I don't think the actual con, for me, the actual contract language isn't necessarily doesn't necessarily need a whole lot of legal maneuvering. It's the, yeah, it's the terms under which we agree to stay in this relationship.
Okay. So, yeah, let's tack on an executive session next meeting, have the discussion. Do we have two weeks off in a row from this meeting?
No.
No, just one? Okay. The first is a Monday?
Yep, so it's the Tuesday after Labor Day is our next meeting. And if, if the three, if Andrew and Elizabeth and Colin want to have a meeting in advance of that executive session, that also might be a good idea.
All right, comfortable with that? Good. Thank you for volunteering. Appreciate it. Item twelve, convene as liquor control commission to consider the filing applications for approval Myers Bagels LLC first, third, class restaurant bar license. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. We are now convening as liquor control commission. Can I have a motion to approve Myers Bagels LLC first?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So now we do motion to come out of liquor control.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. See, these are the very quick ones. All right, so Myers Bagels, congratulations. You have been approved for your bar license. Item thirteen, review the significant, significant agenda topics below for the council's September second. Oh, removing the Monday to Tuesday. I see what you're saying. Okay.
So just to talk this through quickly, so we do have a ASME contract to bring to you for consideration. What I would recommend is if you all are available, that we do that executive session at five thirty or five forty five on that Tuesday before the meeting, and then you could have, if you so choose, could take action during your meeting. Are folks generally available?
I think so.
That's the day after Labor Day?
Day after Labor Day. Okay, sure. Schedule that for five forty five. How, how, Colin, how much time do you want for that? Executive session on ASME. Thirty minutes or forty? Okay, let's do five thirty. We're gonna do five thirty. Never mind. We don't have to come down here. More time, five thirty. Also that night, you will have public hearing and possible action on your land development reg- regulations and official map. Similarly, on your update to the nuisance ordinance, you'll interview candidates for the economic development committee, Sextons Energy, and Energy Committee. And hold an executive session at the end. Consider a stipend policy, have a discussion about the fire, the prevention, you know, the fire department expansion. Now having to have a executive session, just you. And the thing I did not put on here, which is not a long item, but a very critical item, is the, we will also be bringing you the FY twenty seven budget schedule for your consideration. I will preview that all is good with the budget schedule, but we are also this fall launching our new finance system and the regular annual audit and online permitting. So we have a couple of things that are a bit colliding into each other. So we just want to be very sure we have shared agreement on the budget schedule so we can manage all of those weeks deliverables.
Just want to note that in terms of item D, there are now two openings on the Sextons. So I don't know how many applicants we have, but.
More than that.
We do, good.
And you added the executive session for?
You guys.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Great. Let's move on to item forty, which is other business. Does anybody have any other business? All right, seeing as none, wait, you do, okay.
No, she is motion language.
Do you want me to make the motion for?
Before we move into the executive session, could we take a quick break?
We, yes. Let's do that.
Do you want to take the motion?
Okay.
All right, I move that the council make a specific finding that premature general public knowledge of the council's discussion of confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the council clearly place this public body at a substantial disadvantage.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
And I now move that city council enter into executive session under one VSA, three thirteen A, one F. For the purpose of discussing confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the council. And would invite Jesse Baker, Steve Locke, and Colin McNeil into session for this discussion. And Jared.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous again. Great, we're now in executive session. We will not be coming, we will.
No.
We will not be coming back when we're done with this. We will, we will be adjourned.